All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, any roll call? Roll call.
Okay, Dr. Phelps.
Present.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Slade.
Present.
President Baker.
Here.
All here.
All right, I'd like to actually make a motion that we amend the agenda and strike from your agenda if you have one that's been posted since this afternoon. Under Action Items, please cross out non-renewal resolution and on the back the closed session personnel hearing if I get support for that motion.
Support.
All right, we just call the roll as is then.
Did you, somebody else should bring it in.
Someone needs a second?
That was a motion, second.
Second, yeah.
You have a voice call, right?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And he knows, all right. Then we need a second motion for the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, all right. All right, celebration.
Good deal. Dr. Baker and members of the board, I would like to ask our friends to come up so that we can talk about peace, education. As you recall, they've come up before over the past few years to share with us, so.
It seems like time is going fast.
It goes, it's September.
You guys were here last month.
Right. That's a good thing.
Well, it is appropriate that we meet once again in August to present the peace program for the Week of Peace Education that the board has so faithfully passed for the last 31 years. And that is an unusual, remarkable program that no other public school system can claim, and I feel very proud to have been part of it for those 31 years. We lost Betty Ford. She was there in the beginning. She taught with the public schools and used our program in the first year. She passed away recently, very recently. She was a wonderful lady. I can't say too much good about her. She's dedicated her entire life to peace and peace education. She wrote books. She kept our committee on track. She had timelines, remember those? Yeah. Anyway, Betty was a Friends member. And you know, there is definitely a religious component to this peace business and part of our program, and the mayor of Grand Rapids has once again declared the International Day of Peace, September 21st, as a day for community activities. And the Institute for Global Education, which I serve on the board, is once again presenting the Interfaith Community Peace Service, and this is in your packet. I believe you have our program, the program guide that we developed using United Nations guidelines and some of our own over the years. But the Interfaith Community Peace Service takes place on 2:00 Sunday, September 20th, the day before the actual week. And at that time, we have members of all kinds of various and different religions. That's not a very good statement, is it? I used to teach English, I should do better. But a lot of world faith religions are represented, and they're going to be explaining how their religions deal with peace. And your resolution calls for a public school dealing with the same topic in appropriate ways. Anyway, you are invited, who I see we have some ministers here, and Pastor Moody, eyes are failing me, but we have another pastor here, too.
You have a couple. If you want to count.
Reverend Legrand.
You're invited. The mayor will be there to read his resolution, and if you would like to speak, you'd be very welcome, okay? Just let me know when you arrive. And with me tonight is Kathy Segenteller, who has been kind of a one-person peace person at Southwest Community Campus. Could you tell us?
Well, I just have been involved with the Institute for Global Ed sponsoring a peace festival every year for a number of years since we moved here, and then also brought it to Southwest Community Campus where we do a multicultural festival every year, and we've incorporated the seven pledges for peace in the community partners' tables and the events for the kids and the families. So it's something that we can, especially through, I just want to give the GRPS and the KSSN program, which I'm involved with, we can do those kind of things at our school, bringing community partners and people together around justice and peace-making activities through this kind of partnership. So been doing it for many years.
Thank you, Kathy. And just one more thing, and Superintendent Neal, you can help me out with this, but you began a new program dealing with, in the background, is conflict resolution, but it has to do with healing and justice in the schools.
Restorative practice.
Okay. I want to commend you on a restorative justice program. It's the very kind of thing that we have been asking for and hoping that our public schools will do. And I wish you well and the students that are going to benefit from that and the staffs that are going to carry it out, too.
Thank you.
It's a great program that you started. Any questions? Mike Franz, by the way. Thank you.
One of the pioneers leads us on.
Thank you very much.
I'll be around later if you have questions.
Public comment, board agenda items. Board agenda items?
Nope.
All right, Secretary's report.
Okay, where am I at? Oh. Sorry. Again, City of Grand Rapids Annual Labor Day Walk. The City of Grand Rapids will hold its annual Grand Crossings Labor Day Bridge Walk on Monday, September 7th at 8:00 at Albany Park. Please join Mayor Hartwell as he leads the five-mile walk. The road is wheel accessible, wheelchair accessible, and appropriate for all fitness levels. Free parking will be available in the city lots, Area 7 by Boy and Stewart Lot, Lot, I'm sorry. And then September 8th, the first day of the 2015 school year, September 8th is fast approaching. If you are new to the area, please call Community and Student Services via our 819-2150 for information to register your child for school. Students are required to wear uniforms at GRPS. Information is available if you go to www.grps.org/uniforms. Thank you. And also, we did have our back-to-school celebration. It was quite successful, I think. Many of the families showed, including staff as well, so I think it was very exciting to see students, I think, ready and excited to go back to school. That's all I have.
One comment question. The next board meeting, relationship to the first day of school, will be on Tuesday, September. All right, Superintendent's report.
Dr. Baker and members of the board, I'd like to ask Kirk Johnson to come forward. We are preparing for fall kickoff.
Hello.
Superintendent, whether or not Neal and other distinguished board members, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening to talk a little bit about the first student activity of the school year. The football season kicked off August 10th, and so the kids are out getting ready for that, as well as the other fall sports that kicked off August 12th. Normally, we have, every other year, we have our own internal rivalry, Ottawa Hills versus Union High School, and that's the crosstown rivalry that we love and enjoy so much. But the in-between years allows us to do something a little different, and this is one of those in-between years. And so this year, we're able to invite, we have invited two of our neighboring communities to come and kick off the football season with us. And so this year, it will be a doubleheader at Housman Field as Union Red Hawks take on the Wyoming Godfrey Lee at 4:30, and then followed by Ottawa Hills taking on Zeeland East at 7:30 there. So we're excited about that. You know, we want the entire Grand Rapids community to come out and support the schools as we kick off the football season there. We want everybody in their school colors and come highly spirited, and let's show our neighboring community, you know, how it is really done here in Grand Rapids. It's a free event if you have advanced tickets. And so we are putting out all the information as to how to acquire those advanced tickets. You can go to our website at grps.org/athletics and find out that, or you can go directly to CTTD, which stands for Crosstown Throwdown Football, at Eventbrite.com. And then that will walk you through how to acquire free tickets there. And if you would like, you can also stop by the high school athletic offices, and the A.D.s will also walk you through how to get the free tickets and print them off and bring them with you. So we're trying to take advantage of some of the technologies that's available for future use, and so we're kind of grooming our spectator fans to kind of go to those websites and get that information there. We have a lot of free giveaways, some halftime games. Our marching band will be with us as well. So we're looking for a very highly spirited time as we kick off the 2015-16 school year. Wow, can you believe that? 16.
It is 16.
Doesn't even sound right. But we're excited about that, and we want to see, like I said, the entire Grand Rapids community come out and support Grand Rapids Public Schools on that day. Thank you.
Good deal.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Secretary, would you call the roll?
Dr. Phelps.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes. I hope there was no need for discussion on that one, I didn't ask for it, but can I get a motion to approve the layoff resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there, is there any discussion?
I would ask Sharon Pitts, I'm not sure, Sharon, I see the purple. Sharon, if you will come down, there seems to be a couple of questions on whether or not this was on the agenda prior to today, so. And this is regarding the layoff resolution, Sharon. Sorry, Superintendent, what's the question? It is a question regarding the GREA layoff, the resolution that was a part of the agenda and not the agenda from today, but it was our previous agenda. I guess there's questions.
So, yeah, could you just explain what the resolution is and its purpose at this time?
Yes, and I'll need actually Mickey to come down and talk about that.
The resolution itself is something that we brought to the board annually since I have been here. It's the resolution where when we have too many teachers and not enough positions. This year, I'm proud to say that we only have seven people. It's the first time since I've been here we have a single-digit number of teachers that we're laying off. The resolution was in the original board packet. It was sent out, I believe, last week on Thursday, that with the resolution attached.
That's correct.
Dr. Baker.
Yes, Dr. Phelps.
I'm just, if my memory serves me, and in the resolution, we usually have a name of those, names of those teachers at the board?
You do have them in yours.
Do I? Is it at the table or in the packet?
It is in your packet. Okay, not at the table.
Got it. I missed it. My apologies.
You can look at a copy of mine if you'd like. That's why I brought this.
Yeah, and if anyone else is interested, and you have it up on your tablets, page 30 of the packet.
I think it's amazing, I'm sorry that there's still seven people, but at least we're at seven now, we can just get that down to never.
We still have a couple weeks left.
So hard to be laid off.
For full disclosure, we may be seeing some of those other teachers coming back to in another forum based on their performance evaluation rating.
So there's a chance that some of these will be brought back?
Yes, in terms of not brought back to work, but brought back to, before you for a non-renewal termination action.
These are our teachers?
Yes, sir. They're all teachers.
How many years have they been on the grand public school system?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me, Pastor Moody.
They're all tenured teachers, though, Pastor Moody. And thus, they would, if we brought them back, they would have rights to a due process hearing if we brought them back for dismissal.
Okay.
Not all of them, but some of them.
I guess I want to understand the layoff. Is it related to our projection of numbers? We just don't have slots for them, or their performance?
Right, it has a lot to do with, to be, there's a couple of them on the list that only want to work a part-time position, which we don't have, and then some it's based on certification, so we don't have positions based in their areas of certification to bring them back to.
These are not performance-related. Right now, these are not, but I wanted to be, I wanted you all to know that some of them may be coming back to you on a performance-related termination. I didn't want to leave you with the false impression that we would be thinking of bringing all of these back if we did have openings that came up. Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more discussion?
Secretary, call the roll.
Okay, Dr. Phelps.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes. Thank you all for sharing this information. Next, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
So moved. Support. Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes. I was going to, I was turning to ask Julie for information.
Julie Sanyadi.
You're just like going to watch tonight? The M.A.S.B. Annual Leadership Conference, would you mind, Sharon? Do you have the information with this? Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
You can sit there.
You can act front and center today, Julie.
Take me a quick moment here. Okay, so the M.A.S.B. Annual Leadership Conference is October 22 through 25, and this is an annual conference through the Michigan Association of School Boards, and we just need to know which board members would like to attend this event this year. And then this is sort of piggybacked with who wants to serve as delegates for the voting process for the M.A.S.B., and that information is in your packet with more detail.
And where is that again?
It should be at the very end.
Traverse City, I think.
Grand Travers.
Right, Grand Travers Resort.
So who has got, who went last year?
I didn't go last year, I went several years, I don't know if I did or not, did I go last year?
Did you?
Couple years ago.
Two years ago?
I went to one in Grand Rapids. It's did you and I.
And.
We went to Grand Rapids.
So typically, we would encourage a couple of people to go and also act as delegates.
That's correct.
So you guys want to, would someone like to go to Grand Travers Resort on October 22nd and represent the board and voting duties?
I might do that. It's usually a really good conference, you know?
Is there a deadline when we should?
I'd say it's October 10 that I have to submit the delegates.
Okay, why don't we, since this is everybody's packet, can we revisit this and put this on the next agenda?
Absolutely.
People could think about it.
October 14th is the deadline.
It's the 14th, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot.
Registration?
Yes.
What date?
October 14th.
We should probably hold a couple of rooms, though, just under Grand Rapids Public Schools, just to ensure we have hotel rooms for the board members. Thank you. We'll do that tomorrow.
Another discussion connected to it. Sir Ross, would you tell about the Cube Conference that you're interested in, and that way other people can find out as well?
Yeah, the Cube Conference Council for Urban Boards of Education, subset of NASPA, National Association of School Boards, and it's a focus on board members who serve in urban districts. And they tier some of the sessions based off of population of your school district. I believe they go 10 to, well, up to 20,000 students, 20 to 30, 30 to 40, 50 to 60, something, and then 60 and above. So the sessions are sort of tailored based on the size of your district, and again, the focus is just literally on folks who serve in urban districts. And that's the long and short of it. I forget the particular strands, the commas offhand, but it did get my attention when I, when I looked it up a little bit, happened to stumble across it and.
Where is it?
Oh.
And when?
This.
It's in October sometime.
And I think it's in Savannah.
I forget where.
Because Nate, John, and I participated in the Cube version, Cube portion of the M.A.S.B., and this was actually, we kind of thought this might be a better one because it's just Cube.
Yes.
And it's more affordable compared to the N.A.S.B., so it might be really useful. Most of what we did at the N.A.S.B. was the Cube Conference, which we didn't need to do the rest of.
Right. Well, of course, in the spirit of today's town, when I search Cube, I get Ice Cube references from, but it's in Phoenix, actually, October 2nd through 4th, wait. Yeah, Phoenix.
It is Phoenix? Okay. And then, did you happen to remember what the cost was at, so people could think about it as well?
Tell you.
That's in October.
Yes, it's the beginning of October, October 1st through 3rd. Yeah, registration is, I don't know, are we a Cube District? It's 425.
No.
No. Non-Cube is 525.
Okay, which is actually really pretty good for a conference, so. And then, actually, does it have the deadline for that one as well?
Yes, hold on.
I'm just going to ask Julie a question again. You, you forwarded us the link. Could you forward that on to the rest of the board, and then if we could look at the M.A.S.B. and the Cube, and then at the next board meeting, discuss who might attend? So we do have a budget for these opportunities, and we have not been taking full advantage of that budget, and it's really helpful for us to connect with our colleagues nationally, so. All right. Next, public comment for agenda or non-agenda items. You have cards?
Yes.
Hey, can I interject something? There's a young man in the audience who signed one of the cards, but he didn't come up yet to turn it in. Is it too late for him to do so?
No.
No.
Larry, could you grab a card? There's a card from.
Yeah, right here in front of you.
Go ahead and.
While we're doing that, Isaiah Martin Jr. Can you come up? We have three minutes.
I'm here because I have some issues with becoming a sub for the Grand Rapids Public School System. First of all, I'm going to digress a little bit here. I put forth my children through the school system, been genuinely happy with the performance, especially at the elementary school level and at the middle school level. My kids were privileged to go to Sherwood Park, Dew School, Lanford, and City. Really happy with the program. Now, back to myself. I am, like I said, I had the indubious privilege of trying to become a sub, and I failed the test. My credentials are, I am currently a doctoral student, last year seeking a doctorate in Business Administration. I have some problems with the process. Some of the process, some of the problems I had with it, the tests simply inquired or inferred about my beliefs as to culture, pedagogy, and to the preference of working in Grand Rapids Public School System. Now, with some of these tests, there are some variables. With myself being a student, you know, especially studying organizations, the variables are age, sex, culture, and implementation over the web. So I'm going to question the validity of these type of tests. Okay? I'm extremely disappointed that you guys have sourced these type of situation to EDU. Extremely disappointed. Now, EDU is a staff is sourced with the taxpayer funding. And with that, the process implied that the level of education does not matter in this case. My question to you is, what are you telling, teaching our kids, our students? Are you telling them that education do not matter? The level of education does not matter? And when you go through this process, would you summarily dismissed from the process? You don't qualify? To me, it sounds like an oxymoron of what you guys and the board and Grand Rapids Public School System are trying to do. Any questions? Okay, in summary, I am hereby predicting that the empirical data that comes back from this process, in the hiring process for substitute, would deduce patterns of discrimination that would lead to litigation. I'm done.
Thank you. It's actually our policy not to respond, but thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Not to respond during the meeting. Okay, Cindy O'Brien? Since it looks like there's three of you, can just each give your names? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Cindy O'Brien. This is Jim Diebstra and Jody Smoos. We are nurses for the district.
I'm up next.
Yeah, and Jim and I are at Pine Grove, so we're here to address the proposed nursing reduction at Pine Grove. But first, I'd like to thank you in advance for the time and interest you invest in our students. We, I have seen the changes that have been happening in Grand Rapids, and we really appreciate it. We see that there's some good positive things happening. Our concern is related to the staff reduction that has been proposed for Pine Grove. Currently, we have two building RNs that service Pine Grove, and these RNs service the whole building, okay? We also have one RN who cares for a ventilator-dependent student with. with an individualized educational plan, which mandates one-on-one RN nursing care service for that student. We have two licensed practical nurses who care for students with IEPs that either require a nurse to be present in the room or in close proximity to the student. The one-on-one RN and the two licensed practical nurses are actually in two classrooms. They service students in two classrooms. The students they service also have licensed nursing care in the home. Okay, so it's consistent with the care that they're receiving in the home. The other building nurses, we have two building nurses, Jim and myself, we service the other seven classrooms currently. The proposed reduction is that that would go to one building nurse. That one building nurse then would need to service the other seven classrooms. So I just wanted to state some of the concerns we have. We have had, this school year alone, 51 medical emergency response team calls this year, with two that occurred in the same time on opposite times of the building. Now, the nurses that respond to those are Jim and I. The other nurses are dedicated to those rooms and those students. And those students require that level of care. And that is the care that they receive again at home. When we've communicated our concerns about safety, we were advised that classroom staff could assume some of the healthcare responsibilities and that the current RN assigned to a student on a one-on-one basis, based on his IEP, may begin to cover healthcare needs of other students. Couple concerns that I want to highlight. And first of all, I need to let you know too, you all have a letter that we've drafted, Jim and I, and it has.
You have about a minute?
What's that?
You have about a minute?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And that letter is a little lengthy, so I'm trying to condense some of the concerns. Okay. So, the delegation of healthcare services to staff include delegating up to six gastroastomy feedings per classroom on both sides of the building, six at a time, okay? With similar administration times on opposite sides of the building. In other words, six feedings in classrooms on the elementary side and the high school side of the building with similar administration times. And RN is to supervise and evaluate the performance of the delegate during the administration of the delegated task, which would not be possible with one building RN due to logistics. Location of the students, number of feedings given, similar times of administration and classroom schedules. A one-to-one nurse is also limited per delegation policy, the Grand Rapids delegation policy, to the routine services of the student they are one-to-one for. They may assist other students during emergencies, not on a routine basis. That is our current delegation policy. Our one-to-one ventilator student had five medical emergencies this year that were paged overhead, that we responded to, to back her up, to service that student alone. Also, in addition to that, there were as many incidents that were taken care of by that nurse herself before, and she didn't need to call us. So, said several incidents.
Hopefully that your colleagues can help you get through the.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Can I just?
So you're, you're monitor up.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm saying is, it's gonna be very difficult for one RN in the building to service all those students in the seven remaining classrooms. To remain in compliance with a student's IEP, the health services provided must match their IEP. We also firmly believe that changing, requiring staff training, changes in the delivery of healthcare services, and possible policy and IEP revisions should be implemented over time with caution, keeping safety foremost. Our professional license obligates us to advocate for our students' behabings and to dutifully highlight the risk of the proposed staff reduction. Our sincere desire is to be proactive in this process rather than reactive. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. You're next? Yeah. Can you restate your name, too?
Yes, I'm Jody Smoos. I'm a nurse of the district as well. And I'm here today to support them in this talk with you guys. And just with the advances in healthcare, we're seeing a lot more at-risk students, a lot more medically fragile students. We're doing a lot of medical care. And so I just kind of wanted to go over some of the legal ramifications with delegation in the policies in relation to school nursing. And you guys are already familiar with IEPs and that legal ramifications of that. But I'd like to just take a minute to explain the delegation to unlicensed assisted personnel or UAPs. Delegation is defined as the ability of a nurse to transfer responsibility of a nursing task to an unlicensed person while the nurse continues to be accountable for the outcomes of that patient or student. Few cue points to delegation that's required by law. And that is, and the guidelines of the Michigan Department of Education, the Public Health Code, the National Association of School Nurses, the American Nurse Association, the National Council of State Boards of Nursing, and the National Association of the School Nurse Consultants, and the Community Health Code. The RN must determine which student care activities can be delegated, under what circumstances it is appropriate, the aspects of the student care by whom the care can safely be provided. The RN is required to train, and the parameters have to include the understanding the health needs, the task to be performed, the expected outcomes, any potential side effects. And they also have to see the person practice the performance and make sure that they are able and competent to do the task prior to them allowing them the responsibility to do it. They're also responsible to monitor and evaluate. So they have to be accessible. It needs to be onsite. The supervision is ongoing. And according to Public Health Code, the RN must be physically present and immediately available, continuous. So, as you can see at Pine Grove, it's not possible to have all those in place under the current staffing with the IEPs, the way they are with the one-to-one nurses and the LPNs. I don't see how legally we could do it and safety of our students, keep them safe. So, you know, in closing, I just think it's, you know, we're, we're really wanting to keep the safety of our students. We're wanting to make sure the liability of the district, as well as ourselves, is, is covered. And, you know, I know financially, the district is always looking at ways to save money. And one thing I do, would like you to look at is, if we do a lot of the delegation of the nursing tasks that are currently being done by licensed staff, can, can they bill for Medicaid? Because we do get, we do get some reimbursement for that, for a lot of those services. And we will no longer receive those funds, so. That's about it. And I'm probably about out of time. Although I did try to talk fast. Oh, there was one other quick thing. One thing that says determine whether a task is delegatable. The task, the, the student's healthcare needs, they have to be chronic, stable, uncomplicated, routine, and predictable. And that is not a lot of our severely medically fragile kids. They are not routine. They are not predictable. And they are not uncomplicated. So, just keep that in mind, but.
Thank you. Did you?
I'm James Diebstra. And I just wanted to reiterate that we're here today out of care and concern for the students at Pine Grove. And as we see the medical conditions of these children getting more and more complicated, and then reducing RN staff who are to oversee the care of all these children, we're just very concerned that it is gonna create a safety issue for these kids. And the last thing we want is for there to be a major medical problem because there wasn't enough staff there to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then our last is.
He walked out. He walked out.
Oh, he did walk out?
I don't know if he's coming back or not.
Yeah, Jaleel Dockery? He must have left.
Is that it? Alright. Superintendent's comments.
First, I would like to just assure the board and the public, we too will do what is best for children, and we will follow the law. We will also ensure that all of our students' IEPs are followed. So, but thank you for that. And then I'd like to thank the staff for attending the back-to-school event last week on Thursday. That was great. We had over 5,000 people attend. And just to thank you to this community and to our staff for doing that.
Start this way? Sir Ross?
No comment.
I just want to express my appreciation for all the staff that have been preparing so diligently for the start of school. Genuinely appreciate it. I'm, I'm expecting it to be the best year ever for GRPS, so.
Yeah, I also wanted to echo what Dr. Phelps said, that many, many teachers are getting together, many partners are getting ready to infuse the school with a lot of the help that's, that's needed to, to really run the district and just all the hard work. Parents are getting ready as well. And so they're, they're also investing in preparing their child for their education for this year. So we're really expecting a lot of, a lot of great things to happen.
Ms. Lee?
No comment.
Yes, I do have a comment. First of all, in reference to the nurses, I understand your plight because my wife's a nurse, and at one time she worked for the Grand Rapids Public School for many years. So I, I hope that there will be some rectifying that can take place with you. Secondly, in reference to Mr. Jaleel Dockery back there, who's standing up, who just walked back into the auditorium. He really wanted to come tonight to talk with the board, especially you Superintendent, because he had something on his mind that he wanted to share. And he came to see me on the 12th of last week. And so I don't know if he still has time that he can make a statement or not.
Fine with me.
Let's go ahead.
It's not like it's nine o'clock at night.
Would you like to go ahead and do your public comment? Just come on down for? We're not gonna pull you down. But it's good that you're here to speak, so. If you could state your name for the record and.
You can pull that mic by you so we can hear you, too. Thank you.
My name is Jaleel Dockery. I recently, recently saw a billboard by the train station stating that more substitutes were needed. And I didn't really, I was concerned. Because as a student, I don't feel that substitutes really help because they don't really come with lesson plans. They, all they do is really give us work. And I think we need more teachers. Because when I was at City, we didn't have that many teachers. We had a lot of substitutes. And in my English class, I had a substitute for the whole first marking period. When we got our actual teacher, it was really hard to like transfer over and understand how he was teaching us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pastor Moody, thanks for, for that.
Wanted to make sure that that got on record because he was very concerned about it. And I think that it's important that we hear from our students who got some concerns. He was very nervous in doing so. He wasn't pushed into doing so. Let me make that clear. We didn't push him to do this. It's something he wanted to do, and at the last minute, I can tell he got scared. But we have some fine students. And Jamil is one of them. Jaleel is one of them. And he really wants to learn. And he loves this system. He loves Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Mr. Grant?
No comments.
Dr. Flores?
Well, I have to, you know, again, echo concerns about staffing and about our district. And, and also, you know, compliment the board for at least hearing me when I express issues that I think are critical issues and that impact our district related to achievement. And if we're going to actually move forward and, and resist our temptation to, to embrace the status quo and how we've always done business, to raise achievement, to raise the bar, to, to produce a higher level of achievement and graduation rates in this district, I would hope that we would come forth and have, or embrace new ideas. And, and I suggest that, that we need to get our hands around the achievement of this district to make sure that all of our students are achieving at a high rate of achievement. And that, that we meet that bar of 50% or more graduation rate. And that in a district like ours, where we have a majority-minority district, that it impacts people of color in our community, that we'd be able to uplift that achievement. And I'm going to continue to advocate for that and hope that, that at some point in the future, that they make part of the agenda as topics so that we can talk about what we can do differently to raise achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
I have one more question. This is not to be answered, but maybe it can be answered later in time. Do we have billboards up that are asking for substitute teachers?
Yes.
Alright. I did attend the back-to-school event last week, and I was really amazed at the staff's, the work of the staff, and also the amount, the role that GRPS plays in the lives of the families of the city. And there was actually a graduation yesterday that most people don't know about. But there was, yesterday, we graduated the last graduate of South High. So Superintendent Neal and Ms. Evans and Kurt Johnson and I were at Messiah Missionary Baptist Church and gave the high school diploma to Reverend Doctor Clifton Rhodes. So, really interesting, the fact that he's also a doctor and just graduated high school yesterday. So, so it's a long story. But if you, and I've, I was, if, being there, reading about South High, the role that South High plays in this community, living in this community as a newcomer to the city, and learning about the role of South High as an institution, and learning about Pastor Rhodes and his work in the community, and what he has met over time in this, over decades in this community. It was really quite an honor that I got to give out a diploma to a high school graduate of someone who graduated the year before I was born. So, and, and by that, I mean, for a moment, I felt like I was in the midst of the meaning of race in Grand Rapids in the 1960s. And it was, in a way to, in a small way, to kind of change some of the reality of that. It was really, really, really remarkable. And I was very happy to be a part of it. And thank Superintendent Neal for including me. And they had a diploma made up that was an exact replica of the 1962 South High diploma. So it was really pretty, pretty fascinating. So, anyway, I wanted to just make sure that everyone knew that we had this graduation ceremony yesterday, so. That's all. Thanks.